A little bit early, so he asked me to take over for him this evening. Our first order of business is we have some minutes to go through from previous meetings, and I think we'll have to take these individually because some of them have different people who attended and didn't attend and things of that nature. So first up, we have the special Rockport Select Board meeting of August 27th, and I'll await a motion on those.
To accept the minutes of August 27th.
Moved and seconded to accept them. Any discussion on these minutes?
I have one comment. It says on page two that Deborah needs to take up the word in a one-year period. It makes it unbalanced. Actually, I think I said it makes no sense. Unbalanced wouldn't be applicable there. Do you -- I'm sorry, Lynda.
I see what you mean.
Do you see what I'm saying? It's down here.
It makes no sense.
Makes no sense.
Okay. So that correction, does anybody else have any other comments, corrections on these minutes? If not, I think we were all here for that meeting, so I'll ask for the vote on these meetings, all in favor of accepting these, the motion? Any opposed? Okay, that's a five to nothing vote. Next meeting was Thursday, September 27th, Rockport Select Board meeting minutes, and we were all present at that meeting as well. Await a motion on that set of minutes.
Move to accept September 27th's minutes.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on these minutes? This was a short meeting.
Yeah, not to be nitpicking, but to be nitpicking, on the first page where it first says Deborah, and it talks about Deborah and others needed to gather more information and then write an editorial explaining their feelings, I would say explaining our views. I'm sorry, this is just a nit with me. We don't explain our feelings. We explain our views or our beliefs or our opinions, but not our feelings. And Jeff, on Jeff's, there's just a typo.
Yep.
It says the complaints from our residents on real estate taxes, not on residents, just a typo.
Any further corrections there? If not, all in favor of accepting as corrected? Any opposed? Five to nothing vote. The next set of meetings is Tuesday, October 30th, and we were all present for this one as well. So await a motion on these minutes.
Move to accept October 30th's board meeting minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on these minutes?
I would, yeah, I would just like, I think it would be a more accurate to say, consider the appointment of Deborah Hall to be one of two Rockport representatives to the Midcoast Solid Waste Board. It doesn't mention that it's one of two.
The motion does, but the heading doesn't.
Oh, okay.
But I think probably to be corrected, the heading should say.
Where it says A, Lynda, consider the --
That was what the agenda said.
Oh, okay. To be one of our Rock -- okay, and I see the motion, you're right. It does say one of our, something for which I will be forever grateful to talk for. Okay, I, then skip that.
Don't stress them.
Any further discussion on these? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous, five to nothing vote. And finally, on Monday, November 13th, and on that one, Mark and Jeff were absent. So any, I have a motion on these minutes?
Move to approve the November 13th minutes.
And a second?
Second.
She's the only one there.
Sorry, there were just three typos.
Okay, go ahead.
Bottom of the first page where it says Town Manager's Report C attached, it needs a D, and second page, at least you know I read them.
I tried to catch these before Lynda gets them to.
Yeah, and then the second place where it says dog, it says I like to congratulate, not congratulation, Lynda, on a yeoman's job, once again, right, on the election, whatever, but congratulate versus congratulations is the main thing. And, oh, sorry, we have to keep on going.
No, you get one on the bottom of that page.
I do?
Yeah, just the typo, bottom of section four, page one of five, section four, just says C attached, not C attach A.
I think she mentioned that one.
Oh, yeah, 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 I said that one.
All right, sorry.
Okay, sorry. So then on page three, Jeff Parker says he lives on School Street instead of Livers on School Street. I guess, this is a question to you guys halfway down the page where it says, Rick, I don't think so when non-resident is changed to resident. Is that accurate?
I'm not following you, I'm sorry.
This is discuss the approved harbor fee schedule. Rick says, I don't, Doug says, will the harbor break even with the new fee schedule? Rick says, I don't think so when non-resident is changed to resident?
That's really had to do with the fees.
I understand, but is that accurate? Is it written? I don't.
Well, it's changed to the same fee as a resident.
That's what it should say.
Or same rate.
When a non --
One non-resident fee.
Resident taxpayer is changed, is, would be a clear clarification of that.
Yeah. And then, and then the next sentence, it says, we ill lose 10,000, we will lose 10,000.
We feel ill when we lose.
Professionals, there's another typo on the, on the next page, on page four, where it says, Rick, the sense of the board was to leave it to the professionals, you need an S. And then I think you've got some, I think there's some, right before D where it says discuss midcoast regional planning, it says Doug, Doug, that, that is very encouraging, so take out the t's, yeah, the T. And then you've got Al and Mark, Al and Mark and Tom agreed.
Tom? Let's take it out.
Yeah, I think that whole thing goes out. Right. So, and then, sorry, on the fifth page, there's an of that should be an if, under where, first line and where Rick is speaking. And I just want, I just want to make sure that those of you who weren't here see that we had adjourned the meeting at 8:10. Oh, sorry. Anyway, okay, that's all I had.
Okay. Any further corrections, comments on this set of minutes?
Does that mean we're long-winded?
Well, you said it.
If not, all in favor of the motion to accept as corrected? And that's three, and then we had two abstentions for the folks who weren't here.
Oh, sorry. We weren't there.
So that's a three, zero, two vote on that one. Good job. Lynda periodically sends me the minutes to correct. I'm going to suggest you send them to Deborah too, because she could probably, I catch some of this stuff, but not all of it.
I don't mind.
It's helpful. Okay. Upcoming board meetings are shown on the agenda. We have an executive session Wednesday, this coming up at 5:30 at the town office, and then our next regular meeting is on Monday, January 4th, 2019, at 7 o'clock PM. Town office, we close on Tuesday, December 4th, that's tomorrow, from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM for some safety and wellness training, and also close for the Christmas holiday on the 24th and the 25th, which is --
Is it eight to nine or eight to 9:30, Lynda?
She may go a little bit over nine, but I think we've posted that.
For those who may be going to the town office and want to be there at nine sharp, perhaps give yourself, have an extra cup of coffee. Both for Christmas on Monday and Tuesday, 24th and 25th, and on Tuesday, January 1st, in celebration of New Year's Day, and another safety training period on Tuesday, January 8th, from 8:00 AM to noon. That's an annual safety training, so that's a bigger deal. That's very important for the town. The agenda shows committee openings. If anybody's interested in serving on a committee, please feel free to fill out an application. We'd love to have you be part of our town governance. Does anybody have any agenda changes this evening?
Would it be good to move up in the agenda, those items where people are here to be present?
They're first under new business, both of them. So I guess if it's the board's sense, we could move them prior to the Town Manager's report if the board wants to.
Spare them.
It's up to the board.
Fine. Yeah, sure.
Do you want a motion?
I'm looking for nods or whatever, it's fine. Okay. I don't need a motion for that. Okay.
I think, just, I think we should have that flexibility each and every time we get together, so that as people come, we can have the business that they're here for efficiently conducted and have them go.
That's fine.
Then they can stay later if they so choose.
Would the board like for us to sort of do that just on a routine basis going forward from now, rather than have?
Only because you don't, you may not know who's going to be here and who's not for what issue.
Yeah, that's true.
Occasionally, you'll have somebody who comes who knows, well, I'm not going to be on the docket until 8:00, and they don't come till 8:00. Also, sometimes we have, like, often Megan will be here for a good portion of the meeting, and so I think it's best to do it on a case-by-case basis. But this evening, it certainly, it makes sense to me, so we can do that. So before we do that, then, we'll entertain any public comment, should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comments from the public would be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment granted by permission from the board. All comment brief and to the point. And if you would, tell us your name.
Okay, David Cockey. I listened, actually watched the meeting last week about, saw some of the discussion about when to start on the library, and I thought I'd come over and just give you a couple thoughts on that issue, question. Actually, back in October, I read one of the articles about, in support of the voting for the bond issue and the other question, and I replied, I think it was in the Village Soup, not sure, but anyway, I asked a question. I said, so how's the select board going to decide when to start spending money if you don't have all the contributions in hand? Doug Cole wrote a very nice response to my question. I don't remember the whole thing.
Now I remember, yes.
So he wrote a very nice response, you know, which I thought was a good response, but I wanted to throw a couple things in. Doug also, though, wrote back on October 14th about why I support the financing plan. He said, the private fundraising orchestrated by the Rockport Library Foundation has been spectacularly successful, period. I think perhaps what he meant was, has been spectacularly successful to date, because my understanding is, I tried to find out how much money had actually been raised, you know, how's it going? Only thing I can find, there was nothing on the Friends of the Library website at all. The only thing I could find was a news release, I guess they put out October 2nd, say, hey, we've raised half the money, half, we've gotten a million of the $2 million. So I really would like to see, pass on to those, to your partners on the library project, be nice to start seeing a graph or something that says, here's how we're raised, here's how well fundraising's getting to. And that really gets to kind of the heart of what I want to talk about, my comments. The, you know, Rick in October 29th said, you know, they've got over a million dollars in pledges, don't know how much more than a million, in grants, and they hope to reach their fundraising goal by spring. I saw something else said they hope to have, you know, be close to the goal by the end of the year, et cetera. And Doug, in his comments, said, you know, we really, we're commenting on October 29th, and I think some of the rest of you have indicated this also, you know, we don't want to go back, we're not going to go back to the residents. End of discussion, we're not going to go back. So worst-case scenario is everybody says gung-ho, hey, things are great, you know, we don't have all the money, but the money's going to come in, let's get started now, let's save that, you know, it's going to, if we start here in the spring, it's going to save money to get started in the spring. We've got to sign a contract now, going to save that $100,000 Rick talked about last meeting, for starting in the spring versus later in the year with not having to heat the building, the construction site over the year, over the winter, et cetera, and then the money doesn't come in. I did a couple, a little bit of math. There's roughly 14, a little bit over 1,400 households in Rockport. Need a million dollars, right? That works out to be $700 on average per household that needs to be raised to get a million dollars. That's a chunk of money, and you clearly aren't going to get it from all the households in Rockport. When, get to the issue of the fundraising, I don't know how they've been raising money. My guess is they've probably gone and seen an awful lot of the folks who have the ability to and would have the will to pledge to write a large check. So there's going to need to be a lot of money raised, there's going to need to be some folks contributing a lot of money. If you say, well, we've got 140 households to write big checks, that's like an average of $7,000 per household. I'm just throwing some numbers out. I don't know if you've thought about this. You know, that's a lot of money. I really do hope they do it. I think it'd be great to have a library, and maybe there's some folks around who can write those checks who haven't been tapped, or who've been tapped and were willing to write some more, but I just suggest you go really slowly. I've heard it said before that a lot of times on projects like this, getting that last 20, 25% of the money can be the tough part. And there are some folks who think that the economy may be slowing down, you know, that folks may be getting a little bit concerned about their investment portfolios. So final suggestion I have is consider, I don't know where you'd find somebody, consider getting somebody who has no involvement with the project whatsoever, but is familiar with fundraising for these types of projects, to give you an assessment of where things stand and just in previous type projects like this, what might be some scenarios that happen. Because as I said, I think the absolute worst situation would be to have signed a contract, possibly construction cost started, money being committed, and then we can't come up with the money, what do we do? Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, if the board doesn't mind, answer some of your questions, and I hope put your mind at ease a little bit. First of all, the Friends of the Rockport Library is not the fundraising arm for this project, so their website probably wouldn't have anything. It's an organization called the Rockport Library Foundation.
That's the website I was talking about.
Oh, okay, okay.
And they are, they are not posting, they don't have a --
Yeah, they don't have a thermometer or something of that nature. And what was, and Doug referred to the remarkability of the fundraising, and then one of the things that was remarkable about it, in my opinion, is that much of that, those pledges came in before the vote. A lot of times in these situations, people don't want to support a project until they know the public is behind it, and so they're anticipating that, that there will be more support coming in now that the vote has passed, and some people who may have been sitting on the fence will be coming in. As far as a fundraising professional is concerned, the Rockport Library Foundation actually has one of the best in the area working for them.
Just real quick, my comment is, do not, not a fundraising professional to tell you or make suggestions how to raise the money. That's not what I'm talking about whatsoever. Maybe if somebody, if somebody familiar with these sorts of projects and funds being raised, you can give an assessment.
Right.
You know, in this typical, has the experience, it says, in this typical project, if you're not at this kind of milestone, start to get concerned, or you're in good shape.
Right. And the professional we have, that the Rockport Library Foundation has onboard, has that experience.
But they have a vested interest to tell you how to.
Yeah, come on back up.
Sorry, I don't, sorry, I didn't mean to get into long discussions.
This is why you want to hear.
But if I get hired as a consultant to go do something, I'm not the person you turn around and ask, how good a job am I doing, am I on target to meet my projections? Have no clue who those professionals are, some professionals will sit there and say, you know, I got hired to do this job, and eh, you know, I thought this would be straightforward, but it's not. We're just not getting the money we thought we'd get. And then other ones will sit there and tell you, you know, whatever it is, hey, things are going great, et cetera.
Okay, point taken.
Yeah, so that's why I just said, that's why I said, somebody who has no connection.
And, and the last thing I wanted to mention is that as part of the, the bond issue that was voted, the select board, this board, has to make a finding
Yeah.
that the private fundraising is to a point where we feel that it will be completed. And it may be that in March, that the board comes back and says, you know, we're not there yet, we need it a couple more months. In that case, this board won't vote to, to, to issue the bonds.
Yeah.
And that'll be a public meeting, and I hope that, you know, folks come and tell us what they think about that.
And I think if there is, people are seeing what's happening with it, there will be a lot more confidence. It's when you, when it looks like there's a small group that's going off and doing things and saying, trust us, trust us, even if they deserve to be trusted, that still is when people get really suspicious. So I'm used to seeing, you know, going through a town, we got a new library, here's a thermometer.
Right. I got you.
Yeah, and that's, and as you say, that's usually the part of the fundraising that comes at the end. It's that last 25%, because one of the things, the PR things about the thermometers, you like to put the thermometer up and have it already, the mercury almost all the way to the top already, and that encourages people saying, hey, I can --
They said they're over a half.
Well, the last, the last report was 1.2 million.
1.2 is what the last one we heard.
So that's good. Now, the question is, how many people in the last month were holding off signing that pledge form? The election came through, and they said, here's my pledge. I wouldn't be surprised if they got a whole bunch of pledges they collected in the last month.
It could be, and I think year-end is a, is a critical time.
And then year-end, so year, so it'll be what happens in January.
But your, your concerns are not falling on deaf ears, at least on this board, I don't believe.
And David, what, you know, I spoke with you a little bit before the meeting, and you seem like a reasonable guy to me, and I, what I'd like to do is get you in touch with the people that are on the foundation.
They're going to be great.
Maybe you could be that independent, no dog in this fight, and sit down and talk with them. I'm sure they'd be happy to.
I don't have any fundraising experience, so.
Well, but sometimes just getting a guy like you who's willing to stand up at a microphone and ask questions, sometimes that can be a good thing.
I mean, I'd be willing to help out if I can, but I don't have any fundraising.
They would be happy to have the help, I think.
They would love to have someone else to talk to.
It's a terrific group of people, and I think you'll find that if you get involved.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for showing up tonight.
Thanks for the comment. Okay. By agreement of the board, we'll move and take care of items A and B in new business prior to the Town Manager's Report, and so for item A, we have Jeff Payson. Jeff Payson here, actually.
Megan Dwyer is not going to be here.
Yeah, okay, I'm just getting to the right place on myself. We have the application of Jeff Payson to join the Budget Committee. Jeff, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium.
Jeff had the unfortunate pleasure of thanking, stopping at the town office to thank me for the work we had done up on Mount Pleasant Street, and talked about how, being on the Budget Committee and, being on a Budget Committee, that he understands how difficult this stuff is. I said, wait a minute, hold on, you were on the Budget Committee? And I didn't even thank, get the full thank you, he didn't even get the full thank you, which you can do now if you'd like, but he didn't even get the full thank you out, because I was already trying to recruit him, because as you know, we were in a bind on not having enough people for a quorum of the Budget Committee, and at this late date, having people who have experience working on a Budget Committee is, is like gold to us, so I asked him if he would be interested.
If you'd like to make a brief introduction and tell us what you'd like to do.
Okay, my, my name is Jeffrey Payson. I live up on Mount Pleasant Street, and thank you for the paving up there. It'll be even better come springtime when we don't have to drive through foot-deep mudholes. Born and raised in Union, Maine, I was on the Budget Committee in Union for 21 years. I chaired it for 18 years. I founded a trucking company in, well, Waldeboro, Maine, in 1986, which we've operated successfully for 32 years. We now have a staff of around 50 people. We run 32 trucks all over the country, selling mostly refrigerated products. You know, I understand and run balance sheets, and is what I do for a living. I understand that the local Budget Committee has no input onto the school budget or the county budget. I'm not sure what you do with your waste here, but in Union, we had the Tri-County Solid Waste Management, which was an assessment that we had no, no routing on either. So it was a very small part of our tax bill that we had any input on at all, so I'm not under some illusion that we're going to come in and see our mill rate go down, but I just want to come in and support the town. Consider me your pinch hitter to come in and help you guys through this fiscal year and contribute what I can without being a know-it-all right off the bat. I want to learn how these budgets work and participate, but not take anything over.
It will be fun.
That's great, with your experience, I think it's wonderful.
We don't get candidates for this coming in with your resume very often, so that's terrific, and we're hoping that you enjoy the experience and want to re-up again, maybe. Although you do have to run at the ballot box for this, for this position.
I understand.
But I think to have you fill out the rest of the unexpired term would be terrific.
And I guess, Jeff, should I divulge at this point that DuPont is one of my large accounts?
Yeah.
And Jeff and I know each other from that.
Yeah, from this discussion, I am abstaining from vote due to any perceived or non-perceived conflict of interest type arrangement.
Okay. They're a contractor for you, is that the way that works?
Yes.
Okay, so it's up to the board, I guess. I mean, it's typically --
And you're both named Jeff.
Typically, it's a, you know, if you have a pecuniary interest yourself, which would necessarily --
Yeah, but in this case, in the spirit of staying squeaky clean on any of these things, I abstain.
That's fine, as long as the rest of the board agrees.
Yes.
Okay. Well, then I'll await a motion on Mr. Payson.
I move to appoint Jeff Payson as a member of the Budget Committee for a term to expire June 2019.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Anybody opposed and abstentions? So four, zero, one vote. Thank you very much for volunteering your service.
Thank you all very much.
I appreciate it. Hope you enjoy the process.
Thank you.
Oh, you will.
Thank you, Jeff.
We have Megan Dwyer's application. She couldn't be here this evening. She's applying for a position on the Conservation Commission, which would be an alternate position. I don't know what the board would like to do with that. Whereas an alternate, we don't have a, you know, a building need to actually vote somebody in. We could if we want to, wait till January and have her in then, if you want to meet her.
I think it'd be good to do just that, wait until the meeting, and then, because we usually do a personal review
Right.
of any member, whether they're alternates or full members.
And she can continue to go to the meetings in the interim and participate as, as, at the discretion of that, of the chair of that commission, so I'm fine with that. Does anybody have any objection to that?
No.
Occasionally, if we have somebody that everybody on the board knows, and it's a position that we have to fill, we'll, he will waive the personal interview, but I think in this case, it might be good to have her in.
I think it'd be interesting to meet her. She obviously is very experienced.
Right. Yeah, look, that's a tremendous resume, and I think she'll be very good for that commission.
Fantastic, yeah, but.
Okay, so we won't act on that one this evening. Next item on the agenda is to meet and greet, discuss the upcoming legislative session with Representative-elect Vicky Duderah. Vicky, if you wouldn't mind coming up, and basically I'll allow Vicky to introduce herself, and then any comments that the board has about any legislative agendas, I think she would be happy to entertain those.
Sure. Hello, I'm Vicky Duderah, your new Representative-elect. I get sworn in on Wednesday, so I'm very excited. I thought I'd just tell you a little bit about what we've been, what I've been doing so far. Starting in November, we had a couple of orientation sessions, it was great up in Augusta. I attended my first meeting of the Coastal Caucus, which was really terrific. I think it's going to be great for the three towns in our district, Camden, Rockport, and Islesborough. So it is all the legislators that have towns in their districts with coastal property. So we did that last week, and we, the topic was ocean acidification, and it was a whole day thing with a whole bunch of experts, and I was really pleased to see both Esperanza Stanchief and Parker Gasset, who are both from our district there, and there were scientists from, there's a guy from UNH, plenty of people from UMaine, and we talked about ocean acidification, and then more importantly, what the legislature can do to stop this, which is, you know, not only affecting the fishing, but will really have ramifications to our jobs and economy, whether we're a tourism economy or we're fishing, fishing towns. I also attended a hearing for Islesborough, and I want to thank Ken for showing up for that, because I know how much that meant to the residents from Islesborough that you attended and that you spoke at that hearing, so thank you. I have attended a session from Maine Health, when they talked, they talked about Penn Bay and Waldo, and I think what's, the challenges that they've got, what they're doing with the opioid crisis, certainly looking forward to Medicaid expansion, which I think will happen very quickly, and that will really benefit both of those hospitals in dealing And that will really benefit both of those hospitals in dealing with that. Today, we had another orientation session. We went over the state budget and judiciary. Tomorrow, we have the, we're going over ethics in a full-day session. We're electing the secretary, we're electing the Attorney General and the Treasurer tomorrow. And that's been very interesting, something I really didn't really realize how much you would, I would get lobbied all summer long and including after the election by all of these people. And you've made me, maybe seen me at Sea Folk meeting with a bunch of them. So that's been really interesting to get to know them. Wednesday, we're sworn in. Thursday, we have a legislative policy forum given by the Maine Development Foundation. So that should be really interesting, just on what they see oncoming trends in Maine's economy. What I'd love from you all is to really have the lines of communication open. And if there are things upcoming that you would like me to be at or participate at, or any milestones happening in the community or with residents of Rockport, you let me know so I can recognize them or do the legislative sentiments. So keep that going. And I know that you have a email that you send out regularly, right, to Rockport residents?
No, not that, not regularly enough.
Oh, well, if you, the next time you do send it out, I would love to maybe write a little paragraph and then invite people if they want to give me their email, because I'm going to start a constant contact. And I'd love to, you know, get addresses of people who are interested. And I think one thing that Rick had mentioned is kind of what would be the, what I see coming on the horizon that might be of interest to our towns. And I, I can tell you, I think, I think right off the bat, what we're going to see happen is the schools funding at 55%. The Medicaid expansion, that's going to happen very quickly. And there was quite a bit of talking today about increasing the revenue sharing from 2% to 5%. And although that's scheduled to happen, I think it's going to happen more quickly than that. So without even being sworn in, those are the things I think, think so far. But love to answer any questions or any comments you have or things, or really hear from you. What are the things you want me to be watching out for that the town of Rockport's concerned about?
I know the revenue sharing is a big one, I think, for us.
Yeah.
We have the Legislative Policy Committee agenda from the Maine Municipal Association in our packets. And there was some, some talk in there about local option sales tax possibilities, which is a tool that's been bandied about ever since I've been on this board. It's come up for discussion and things of that nature. And some of that was sparked by the loss of revenue sharing, because revenue sharing was originally intended to be the municipality's share of the sales taxes that are collected. So I think local option sales tax might be an interesting thing to look at. Personally, I, I would not want to see it broken down to the, to the town and city level. I'd rather see it, if it's done, to be done on a county level. That's what it's, in other states that have it, that's the way it's done. But if, you know, if the revenue sharing can be restored, then maybe that lessens the pressure on that a little bit, just my opinion. Anybody else want to chime in on that?
I, I think that the bill's already been put in about it, so I'll certainly keep my eye on it. And I hear what you're saying about the county level rather than the town level. I should say too, that I'm already co-sponsoring a number of bills. I've put in a few on my own also. And just looking to see, one, well, I've had one Rockport constituent who's reached out to me about one tax bill. So I'm researching that and probably be putting that in, so, yeah.
Personally, a couple of things that I would like to see talked about. We've, the state has approved recreational use of marijuana. That's the way that train is going. One of the things that I said at the very beginning is that I would like to see, and I'm not sure it's happened yet. I really want to see robust penalties for furnishing to minors. Because the buzz about the legalization of marijuana for recreational use gives the impression that it's not harmful. And it is. It is harmful to kids with a developing brain. And I'd like to see, and going along with that, I think, you know, the laws regarding furnishing of alcohol could be lumped in. And I'd like to see some real penalties for, for the 25-year-old who goes and furnishes these substances to those who are underage. I think that that's, that's part and parcel of responsible adult use. And then one more little pet peeve before we let you go. Central Maine Power. They are a public utility.
We were just talking about this.
And this is something maybe you haven't heard of, but one thing that really annoys me about Central Maine Power, I haven't had any problems with my rates or anything like that, is that when I send my bill in, it goes to Boston.
Oh, okay.
Those jobs, in my opinion, for a publicly regulated utility in Maine, those jobs of doing that clerical work should be here in Maine. Those bills, in my opinion, that, we have people in Maine who can do that work. It doesn't have to go to Massachusetts. And there's some jobs there, I think. So I'd like to see some regulations on those. I mean, if it's a private business, they can do whatever they want, but this is a publicly regulated utility, and I'd like to see those jobs here in Maine.
That's a good point. I feel like that about Starbucks on the turnpike. I'm like, why do we have Starbucks?
Anyway, I'm off my soapbox. Love to see up there.
Vicky, did I send you the Legislative Policy Committee agenda?
No.
Okay, I'll get that to you.
Rick is our representative to the Maine Municipal Association Legislative Policy Agenda. Are you still on the executive board there?
No, I'm off the executive committee at the end of this, the end of December, but.
But he's a big wheel over there.
But the, there is 10 initiatives that the Legislative Policy Committee, and it, the Legislative Policy Committee is a committee made up, it's hard to imagine, of 70-plus people from representing areas all around the state that get together over the, a period of months and develop initiatives that we think, as a group, as for all of the towns in the state, initiatives that should move forward through the legislature, knowing that there's 10 of them. And out of the 10 of them, you know, we may be successful with three or four or five of them. But, you know, there's, there's, there's one on adult use marijuana sales league. So that the tax, some portion of the tax goes back to the towns that actually have, you know, sales.
Yeah, makes sense.
Going on in their towns. The municipal right-of-way one is that, that's one that is really targeted at broadband expansion. And there's three components to that that allow for broadband expansion in the municipal right-of-way with attachment agreements, make-ready stuff, and a bunch, bunch of other things. Another one is county health, inmate healthcare costs, which, you know, unbeknownst to me, is when, when somebody goes into the county jail, that they may, they're, they may get taken off of Medicaid. And then, then the county has to provide them with their healthcare costs, which then gets passed on to us as towns. Another one, this, this one is a hot topic. This, this one took a lot of conversation at the, at the meeting, was unanticipated school aid, school aid, like we had a cup, last year, I think we got some money back. What happens to that? And, you know, the, the idea that that should be used to reduce property taxes, not to pay for the things that the school may or may not have needed as part of their budget process. So these, all of these things, they've moved forward with the idea that they're going to get amended. And, you know, we may or may not be successful in them all. The full restoration of revenue sharing, that was a, that's been one for the past, since it was reduced. Because everything, every time we get that reduction, that reduction goes right back into more taxes or assessed for local property taxpayers. And then a constitutional amendment to make it so that they can't mess with that anymore. A homestead expand, exemption expansion, the local option sales tax, which come to find out that there's 35 states in the country that have local option sales tax available to their community. So it's not, it's not a far-out thing. And for the town of Rockport, based on our, our income, based on our sales tax records from previous years, we, it, it, it could mean, just at a single percent, could mean about $600,000 a year to the town of Rockport. Property tax, a tax deferral program for seniors and property tax exemption credit expansion. So those are the 10, the 10 things that the municipal association will be moving forward. And you will see that coming forward. And Kate will probably be reaching out to you and, as a legislator, as a legislator, trying to help move those initiatives forward, knowing that there's 10 of them and we're not going to get them all. But we, the municipal association, which is an association that represents all of the communities in Maine.
Got it, yeah.
And it's a, it's not, it's, they don't, the association doesn't decide it. The, the Legislative Policy Committee decides what gets moved forward, so.
I think that committee is, has representatives by senate district, if I'm not mistaken.
Good, great. Well, I'll look forward to getting it.
So it's me and Jay Philer are on our, Jay Philer is also the town, town manager in Union, is also the representative for our area.
Terrific, great. Any other comments or?
Anybody have anything else for, for Vicky this evening?
No. Governor-elect Mills came in today, so we get to see her, and she's very excited, so, anyway.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much for coming in today.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. You can feel free to stay around for all the excitement if you like.
Yeah, I'm thinking, she's not even sitting down. She's not even going to sit down.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, so let's hop back now to the town manager's report.
Okay, I got to get back up there. Hold on.
Am I supposed to be running this thing, by the way, or is that somebody else's job? It's up here.
I wouldn't worry.
I didn't know whether I was supposed to.
I wouldn't worry about it that much.
Mr. Town Manager, any particular comments or does anybody?
No, I think my, you know, if we're going to stick with the same practice we've done in the past couple of meetings successfully, I might add, is if there's anything that I've not covered in my report or if you have any questions, in reading my report, I, I do notice that there's, when you go to the way at the end, there's a bolded text. For some reason, that should go up under planning, under the planning report.
Oh, the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions, Town Manager?
Well, looking at the agenda, trying to find where else I could bring some of these things up, but this might be the right place.
I, I won't be shy. I'll start.
All right.
With Hannah's successful completion of her assessing training, will we no longer be paying Camden for Caitlin's service in the upcoming budget?
That's something we haven't discussed, but probably not, because Hannah's still the administrative assistant for the office. So, you know, I'm not sure. We haven't gotten that far yet.
But she is trained to do that?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
May lessen the pressure on it, it seems to me, if nothing else.
She's the administrative assistant in the office?
Anybody have any other questions at all?
Yep, on library. And I'm offering this in the spirit of making sure transparency is proper going forward. Rick, the demo work that began recently, how is that being accounted for financially?
How, how's it being accounted?
Yes.
For, it comes in, any payments that come out, they go into our assess, our, not assessing, our trio. We pay for it out through the account we have set up for it already. So we have, we have a library construction project account that's already set up. And so the, the money that goes out will come out of that account.
All right, is it, so is it being applied to the capital project?
Well, to, some of it may or may not. That's something that the board needs to decide which way it's going to get a, get a, is it going to get charged to the project or is it going to get charged to just the demo of the, the demo of the project?
So do we have, we have money in the budget now for, for this work? I guess that's, I think that's the question.
Well, my, my question's twofold. One, any work associated with a project in common practice, any expenses, whether it's demo or it's the roadwork or anything, if it's associated with doing the library, it should be assigned to the project proper. Otherwise, it's an additional expense that the voters didn't vote on. So that we have, we have to be very careful of. So my question is, we had demo work being done this week. So you've got, and it's, you've got the time charged out by Public Works, you've got the time charged out by Public Works. There is a value associated with the work that was done. Is that being assigned to the project or is that coming out of a different fund above and beyond the project?
That'll, that's a determination that the board will have to make.
Well, wait a second. To be, to be clear about this, I think this is what your question may be. We have a very detailed estimate of the cost of the building. You know, we've had four different people do it.
We know what's going to make up the three and a half million.
No, no, yeah. Well, in that line item, each one of those estimates has a cost of demolition. And it's about 24 to 26,000. So my answer to you would be, you know, yeah, you know, there it is. We can show you on the estimate, there's that in line for 26,000.
I understand there's the estimate. My concern is, or I just want to make sure that the work that was done, the demo work that's being done, is that being, is that expense being applied to the project? Or is that going, is that expense being absorbed by the town budget and the taxpayers in a different way?
Right.
I guess if you're saying 100% transparency, it ought to be assigned to the project, to be honest with you.
Correct.
Because we have a line for it. There it is.
Right, it's getting charged against that line.
In the project?
In the project, yep.
Okay, so, so that expense will be moved to the project or as it's being done or at some point? So if you spend $15,000 on Public Works' time, hours, labor, parts, pieces, and everything else, is it going to be, is that expense, when it's summed up, going to be moved to the project?
Reimbursed.
Yeah, typically, no. We would not be going through and charging out all of the Public Works employees' time to that project.
But we should.
Right. Ken, if you want me to.
It just, it would mean a, an accounting entry at some point when, for example, when we get the bond funding or whatever, to say, okay, let me take out of that bond funding and private funding, whatever the amount is, and then, you know, make a, make a journal entry and move it.
Yeah, we need to, we need to add up, just, this is just proper, making sure that everything's thick and tied properly. And when you do the depreciation on this stuff, it all has an impact as well. Is, some of all the work that's been done or going to be done by Public Works or any other entity within the town government that is going to cost money, needs to be moved to the project.
Right. Yeah, and it's a topic that the, the design team will be talking about on Thursday. That's one of the things we talked, we discussed today.
Why is the design team talking about that? That's what I don't understand.
You know, I agree completely with you, Jeff, and I'll, you know, we go to the design team and whatnot. You're right, one thing that, since I've been in town government, I've discovered is, you're right, there's an awful lot of squishy money out here. And if something has to be done, somehow we, you know, shake out the cushions and find the change. But you're right, you know, this is something we're doing, we're putting in hours, we're spending diesel fuel on. We should be able to, resources, we ought to be able to, you know, put in there and hopefully it'll come out less than the 26,000 we budgeted. But I, I, I see what you're saying, and you're right. I mean, Rick, you're sort of talking like a politician.
Well, I'm trying to get.
If you know what I mean.
Yeah, I'm trying to get the most, I mean, because we're, we're tight on pulling this off financially.
Oh, yeah, there was no question about it, but I don't think, just because we're tight, doesn't mean we can be, you know, kind of moving things under.
Well, but we've been, we've spent money previously, previous to the bond, we spent, there's been a, you know, some money spent getting us to the bond. We don't have the bond done yet. The lib, currently, we're spending money that was given to us by the library committee. That money now is gone. We've gone through all that, all of that cash. So now we're into, into a negative.
And we're not expected to pay that back either, is that correct?
No, no.
Okay, so.
The Library Foundation may be able to, the private fundraising may be able to replenish the.
Yeah, if they would need to.
If they have the money to do it.
I'd like, I'd like to have for January's meeting and accounting of the wages, benefits, truck costs, anything associated provided by the town for us for the January meeting.
For the library project?
Any, any little tidbit that they've been doing up there with demolition, taking stuff over to Route 90, over to Needful Things or whatever it is, their hours, wages, benefits, all that total.
Well, I think you can.
Because if we're going to get reimbursed, we need to know what that is. And if we need to know what that is, Mike needs to start doing it.
You're not likely going to get reimbursed for all of that.
Why are we doing it then?
I think to build, get the li, to get the town's library built.
Well, I think, I think. Well, I think, I think what we can do is have, I don't know that it has to be chapter and verse accounting, but I think some general idea of what the cost of the town is for the Public Works crew to be there, I think is reasonable, and then, you know, when the, when the funds come in for the library, that's, as I say, it's just a journal entry moving, saying, okay, we're gonna reimburse the Public Works line, we're gonna draw, let's use the twenty, twenty-six thousand number, whatever it is, from the bond, and we're gonna reimburse that to the Public Works line for, I think that's not unreasonable.
I don't see why you wouldn't, if you've got twenty-six or twenty-seven thousand for demolition, that's included in, somewhere in that three-point-five million, right? And then the town is doing the demolition, well.
Now, what I don't know is, is, and this would be a question actually for the design team, I don't know how much, what assumptions were made on the demolition, that if there were assumptions made at the beginning, well, we can have the Public Works crew do some of it to save money, and then if the cash outlay was for other, I don't know what that is, there may be, there may be an issue there.
The assumption always was that the Public Works crew was gonna do the demolition.
Right.
It was interesting that everybody, all of the estimators came in in that, you know, twenty-four to twenty-eight thousand dollar range, but you're right, I don't really know.
I don't know if that was expenses above and beyond what Public Works would do.
No, that was to have somebody else come in and do the demolition.
Then we should be able to, we should be able to come in with a, with a lower number than that, for having our own folks do it.
All, my point is, we should be transparent and make sure that any cost associated with the demo is assigned to the project and not absorbed somewhere else in the town budget.
No, I think that's reasonable.
Okay, because it's, and then, now my next question gets to a bigger number, the street work that's going to be done out in front of the library, and I'm not making this stuff up on my own, I mean, I'm getting pings here, because, you know, forty-seven percent of the population voted a different way on the library. The cost associated with the roadwork in front of the library that's being done to facilitate the library, how is that being funded, and where's the money coming from?
That would, that's another budget, that would be another budgeted item that will come up at this year's budget round, because the board voted back, I can't remember when, the board voted that the building cost would be a mil, three and a half million dollars for the building exclude, not excluding the roadwork or the parking, that the roadwork and the parking is separate and would be part of this year's budget process.
All right, and that was voted uncovered and everything prior to, earlier, in another year?
So, so it'll come up in this year's Public Works budget, and with it, hopefully, a reimbursement from the state for a significant percentage of it.
All right.
For fifty percent.
And that's stuff that's all been covered in the past?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm good there. And then the last question I have, again, I'm not making this stuff up, furniture for the library and that type of stuff, is that included in the three and a half million dollar project?
That's included in the three and a half million, that's in the soft cost.
Yeah, there is, there is some included in there, I think there's, there's an, there's an expectation that some of the stuff they have now will be reused, and that's also the, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but it is also, if we end up tight on budget, that some of the stuff that they might have wanted to have new, they'll have to make do with what they already have, so.
That's a big portion of the conversation on Thursday, is this, what, what are the soft costs, you know?
So with.
Narrowing down on what those are.
With regards to the road improvements, and we know that come March or April, we may not be at the two million dollar figure, so we may not be going out for bond, will that number need to be then necessarily in next year's budget, because it will take quite a while for the building to be completed, could it wait to the upcoming year?
I think the thought, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, the state funding schedule for the reimbursement of the roadwork, I think we're on the docket for the following budget year, so the state reimbursement, that road project might not get done until the following year, and then we'll have to decide as a board, well, do we wanna sock away half the money in this year's budget, and then.
Well, I think the state will want us to have, I think, my understanding is the state will want us to have our portion in hand, so that we can start right away when the, their money becomes available, so we'll have to have it budgeted.
I guess what I, where I was going with that is, like last year, I, personally, I don't think that we ought to have two separate street projects going, one for two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand and another one for two-hundred. You know, if we're gonna have a project, make that be the project for the year, and you're not budgeting four-hundred-and-eighty thousand for work, you're only doing the two-hundred-and-twenty, or whatever it might take.
You mean, our normal construction.
Right.
Budget, okay, yep.
I mean, I, it's just, it, it's nice, but it also jacks that up another two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand if you allow another set of paving to be done, so.
I'm gonna say this now, because we're talking about that street, can we get a parabolic mirror back in that intersection? I mean, it's gonna be a couple of years before we have this roadwork done, and I can't tell you how many accidents almost occur there, and I saw one, there was a bad one, there could have been a bad one, that I, that was right in front of me a few days ago. There used to be, I've owned my house for twenty years, there used to be a parabolic mirror, as I've mentioned a number of times. There was a parabolic mirror in that, in that island.
Oh, there was?
Yes, and you could see what was coming around the corner, and then all of a sudden, like five years ago, or, you know, some period of time, it disappeared, and, and, you know, to save somebody from having an accident, before I was elected, I asked for a parabolic mirror on a couple of occasions, and that's never happened, so now that I'm on the board, I really would like us to have a parabolic mirror.
There also, there also used to be one down at the bottom of Summer in Maine, just in case you didn't know that one either.
I don't remember that one.
If it saves one accident.
So speaking of which, how did we get the one by the overlook on Pasco Avenue?
It was there and we put it back up.
It's never been there that I know of.
It's been there be, it was there in my time, I remember that being there. I remember that mirror being there.
But it's there because, did the residents over there ask for it?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you, I mean, I, I really appreciate that, because I, people complain about it all the time, and I keep hearing, well, you know, it's gonna get fixed when we do the library, but, you know, somebody's gonna have an accident in the meantime.
Anybody, anything else on the town manager's report?
Well, speaking of which, I noticed at the end of it, you talked about the EMA training, and I know la, last year, after I'd done a little homework, has our EMA director and his assistant done the training that is provided on a monthly basis? Last year, the assistant hadn't.
Yes, one of them is attending all of those meetings, as far as I know.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, if, if the assistant hasn't done it this year, I would say that.
She's done the necessary training, but their monthly meetings, is that what you're talking about?
Right.
Their monthly meetings, one of them is supposed to be in attendance at every meeting, whether it's.
And do we know that that's happened?
That's, I would just, my assumption is that is what's happening.
Could you check, because I know last year it wasn't the case, so I, if I'm gonna pay somebody a stipend, I'd rather have them be doing the things they're supposed to do.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, facilitator of the meeting, sir, do we have, I didn't see on here, committee updates, is that? The liaison reports? Yeah, that'd be at the end.
I'm sorry, there it is, come on. I'll save the next one for them.
Just one quick comment on the library, I thought Rick did a nice job in his report, and also in the press release, about explaining to the public that what we're, what's being done about trying to reuse stuff in the library building, because I had a lot of questions about that. The reality was that there wasn't a lot there of great value, but the heat pumps were taken out, and we've salvaged some of the stone, I was by there today, most of the stone is gone, and the Public Works has taken it, including some plantings, and so, I just want the folks out there to know that we did our bet, level best to try to salvage the material and reduce what goes to the landfill as best we possibly could there. I appreciate your detail on that. Anything else for the town manager? Okay, if not, we move on to the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, I do wanna go back a minute, could you kind of update us again on the streetlights and the interface with the reported and fix it, you know, these are two topics that I've certainly been interested in over the past years, remember Mark and I, when we initially got elected, spent a lot of time, I went down and met with Central Main Power, the district representative, and didn't get anywhere, and then there was a new person, she retired, and a new person came on, and along with both Brandy and Molly, it seemed like we were making some real good progress on getting the streetlights up and running, and then sort of along those same lines, you know, the whole reported, fix it thing that I've been a big advocate for, encouraging our townspeople, you know, now when you go to it, it's like, you know, everything is all streetlights, and it's, it's just kinda hard to tell what else is going on around town, so could you just update us on where we really are with these, these two things?
One of the challenges is that there's several pieces that are moving. We finally got CMP to give us a map of where all the streetlights are, and then also a map of the, the names of the streets that they use for our, our streets, which is, they're contradicting each other, but we've been able to work through that piece. The problem that we're having now is that we only update the reported, fix it unless somebody calls us and says that the streetlight has been fixed, we, until the police officers go out at night and, and go around and look at all those streetlights that are out, unless we get that, and that's done once a month, I think they're doing it monthly now, unless they, so they, it, it won't get updated as soon as it gets fixed, so there's gonna be streetlights that'll remain on that thing for a month or more, before we get.
Seems like it's been.
Right.
At least a month.
Well, they may be not getting fixed, and one of the challenges is because the, the CMP, did we talk about this last time? CMP does not use the same name from, as Mark knows this, for many of the streets.
Yeah, we talked about it last time.
I sort of thought we'd gotten beyond that, though.
No, it's still, it's still a case of trying to.
Well, let me, let me go back then, and I hate to keep laboring it, but I will. So we did get that new person at CMP.
Yes.
And she seemed very helpful.
Right.
And Molly had a good working relationship with her, and Brandy came on board, and she's very capable, but it seems like there's still a hell of a lot of streetlights out.
Yeah, there is, there's, I think there's about twenty-eight or.
I was gonna say, that's if you count them up on reported, fix it, which is when Mark and I did it, that's about what it was.
Yeah, oh, I think it was more than that.
That were, uh, not much, I've got the original list, but, you know, we're paying for those.
The, the approach that I've taken, and I don't, if I'm repeating myself, stop me, the approach I've taken with CMP is to say, unless you can, you know, I've talked to our lawyer about this, unless they can identify the streetlight with a billing address that we, we can confirm, so putting the, the old Route One cutoff as a location, would you pay a bill for something that you didn't know that, you know, the, the billing address they have is the wrong location, so we can just say, we're not, we're gonna stop paying, paying the bill on streetlights that don't have a billing address that, that we have any sense of that those are in Rockport, even though they can say that they are, but you need to give us a street address that we use. That's not our problem, that they're using a different street address. That seemed to get their attention, because as, remember, the, the lawyer said, we couldn't just not pay them, but we can, you know, I can say, you're not billing us correctly, that's not a street in our town.
We can't, we can't just not pay them, even though, even though we're not getting the service, even though we don't have the light.
Right, but we can say, we're not, you gotta prove to us that that light's in our town, because that's not a street name that we use.
And why does the lawyer say we have to pay for something that, a service that we're not getting?
It's be, no, it's because PU, it's a PUC regulation.
Regulated by PUC.
Ah, so, we have no choice.
But this, this approach, he, when I talked to him last, and then I went, when I went, met with, phone call, conference, conference call with the people at CMP, that seemed to get their attention, is that, why would I pay a bill for something that you haven't properly identified?
We could always unhook about fifty thousand dollars worth, that would get somebody's attention.
Yeah.
Well, it goes to the whole LED, LED thing that's on the agenda, right?
Yeah, say we have that item on the agenda later on, which may, in the long run, solve the problem. Okay, anything else, and I, before we move on, I actually wanna put in a plug for Holiday on the Harbor coming up this weekend, actually, it'll be out of town this weekend, so I'll miss it this year, but the fireworks display for Holiday on the Harbor is the best of the year.
It's phenomenal, yeah.
It's really good, and it's something about this, it's darker, because it's this time of the year, and, and the air is clearer, but they're really are fantastic.
And they're close.
Yeah, and they're very close, and a lot of stuff going on, so, Holiday on the Harbor this weekend, so.
I was really impressed with all the things on your list here.
Yeah.
And I hope they're well advertised.
Yeah, the crew, Diane, and Diane is, and Brandy have raised about thirty-five hundred bucks just through a letter that they sent out, and so they've done a lot of work getting this all pulled together.
That's great.
Great, great, I wish I could be, go see the Charlie Brown Christmas at the Opera House, that's a, that's a favorite of mine, and seeing that with popcorn would be great. Okay, are we all set with the manager's report?
Yes.
Okay, on to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda, the Opera House fee schedule, which we have in our packet, we also have a donation from Coastal Opportunities in lieu of taxes, and a General Assistant's fuel donation. Does anybody wish to pull anything off the consent agenda this evening?
I'd move to approve the consent agenda as presented, and to send out thank you letters to Coastal Opportunities, as well as Paul and Julian Charbonneau for their donations.
They have those here for people to sign tonight.
Any second on that? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's a five to nothing vote.
Mr. Chairman? I, I just got a text, somebody watching the meeting, and I think it's Molly, saying that one of the things that we're working on now, to answer Doug's question, is we're, we're getting the, hi Molly, if that's you, is we're working on getting the, the GIS overlay layer from, from CMP added to our map, so that we have that overlay on our map, so, with all of their locations on it.
Well, with that, the next item on our agenda is discuss LED streetlight project with Camden, so here we go. Worked out, moving people around and shuffling the, the things around worked out great. We have Rick's comments on this, as Rick explained it to me, basically, Camden has done the work on this, and we have to decide if we would like to, to ride along with them, so.
And all we're doing is riding along in terms of the RFQ at this.
Right, exactly.
Right, there's no cost associated.
No cost, and they've done all the work.
Rockland has signed on also, and I think Union is looking at it as well.
It looked like on the RFQ, it listed Lincolnville, didn't it?
Yeah, Lincolnville, I don't think has any interest, they've only got nineteen streetlights, I think.
Oh, okay, but they were just listed on here, though, right?
Yeah, they were, I think initially, when Camden did it, as I understand it, they were looking at Camden, Rockport, Lincolnville, and then they, when they, so they did it with the blanks in there, which is why they have the question marks in there, and then Lincolnville apparently decided that they, they didn't wanna participate.
I thought Rockland was already done.
No, they had just did the downtown.
Except part of it, yeah.
They did the downtown, and they've been wanting to do the rest, they've got about two-hundred-and-ninety Cobra Head streetlights all around the rest of the city.
My opinion, this is a great opportunity to maybe get some economies of scale of this project, particularly if somebody comes in and says, hey, we can do this, and we can, you know, save a dollar or two per fixture across the towns that participate.
And actually have working lights.
Yeah, I definitely think we should look into it, which I think this is what we're being requested. I still have some concerns, you know, we buy those streetlights and we own them, you know, and so when there's a problem, it's Mike Young or guys from our DPW that have to go out and tackle them. The other question, and again, I'll confess, I didn't read this terribly carefully, but are we paying a rental fee then to the CMP to use their poles to mount our things on?
We pay several fees, and that's one of the things that's changing in the legislature now, that's made this even more, there's more incentive for us to do that, is where some of that rental fee is going away, so we have the ability to change it. But Mark just brought up a point, that he thought that the town owned the streetlights, that are not the Cobra Heads.
In the Don Willard era, the town bought some and had them installed by CMP at the time, they're the.
Oh, the, the historic ones, yeah, yeah.
The old-fashioned, flat domed ones.
Yep, so that, that'll change the, that'll change the formula for us, whether, how, how effective it'll be for us, you know, cost-effective it'll be for us to convert over, because we're not paying them, we, we're. we're not paying them, we're not paying them for a lease of that, or rental of that equipment. We're paying for the electricity charge, and we're paying for the pole.
Who maintains the historical-looking ones in downtown?
CMP.
So we own them, but they do maintain them.
Well, if Mark is correct, and we did actually buy them.
And, you know, Dawn would be a good one to do that, because he was championing that at the time. But that was one of his babies, so to speak.
And I think as part of this, Rick and I discussed it, the RFQ, apparently there are companies out there now that are willing to do arrangements like the solar roof arrangement, where they actually, you know, we don't have to put the money up front for this, and then they can maintain them for a while or something, and there's some sort of agreement. But I think, I mean, basically, the way I see it, this RFQ is allowing us to gather more information.
Right, right.
It's not an obligation, and I think-
It's not an obligation, and it's free, and somebody else has already done the work.
Somebody already did all the work.
You know, I think-
Let's hitchhike off this.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so wait a motion here.
So I just had one, when I was reading that, sorry, and one of the paragraphs going down, it says, she, I assume that's Audra, has done research since then, and it's her opinion that it can be done at no additional cost to the town, and significant savings. So at no additional costs might indicate that there's been some, maybe?
No, no, no cost to the town.
That's just the way it was written out.
Yeah, just the way it was written out.
Ready? I move to approve the town of Rockport's participation in the RFQ process with the town of Camden as presented, and thank you to Camden for doing all the research and work.
Motion, do I have a second? What are you going to second that?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's a five to nothing vote.
I'm going to head out now too, I mean, I'm fine, but just, you know, tired.
Long day.
Well, thank you for-
Be careful on that motorcycle.
For being here while you were here.
Careful on that motorcycle.
Okay, the next item is a discussion of the Airbnb situation. And I think at this point, we don't, as a board, want to get into the minutia of what could go on or something like that, I think we just want to talk about, do we want to look into this and task either the ORC or Bill Nape Power, which Bill's already done some work at looking into how they could be, how we could deal with it going forward, because it is an increasing issue in town.
I think, well, it's an increasing issue in our town, and, you know, in many towns across the nation, and I think it's important that we look into it, that we consider, you know, we consider the pros and cons and the issues associated with it, but I have asked actually the town before I was elected, through Jamie, a couple of times, to try to get this on the agenda, so I would very much like to see us do this.
And I know when it came up a couple of years ago, we shied away from it because other towns were doing some work, and I think now that other towns have done some work, we have, we have a little more to sort of hang our hat on and move forward, but, I mean, the outline of the issues, I think summarizes things pretty nicely.
I think so, and I would just like to say, and if you could pass this on to Bill, Rick, that another issue I think that needs to be added here is the fact that, you know, we have BNB's and commercial establishments in town, you know, that rent their properties, obviously, to tourists and so forth, and there are regulations and licensing requirements, and a lot of that stuff, that carries a lot of regulatory cost that those entities have to comply with. And so from a commercial perspective, I just think that whoever in town is going to be, hopefully, looking at this, that they keep in mind that kind of, you know, level playing field equities and what we're doing to our own commercial establishments by having kind of this, the free existence of, you know, it's just another issue that I think is not really listed here.
That was one of the big things in Camden, when they talked about it in Camden, is the bed and breakfasts in Camden have to comply with all kinds of regulations and rules.
Yep.
And the Airbnb's don't have those same thresholds.
Well, I think it's, you're right, it's protecting the commercial establishments that are playing by a set of regulations, and I know in Camden, they had the issue a few years ago, that some of the BNB's wanted to serve dinner, and the restaurateurs got all upset about that because it takes away their business, so I think we have to move through this carefully, and at some point, and maybe it'll come in a workshop, the board, I think, will have to go in and look at, just to give guidance to the ORC, to say, well, where do we, how big a scope do we want to allow this type of property used to occur? Do we want to allow it to occur anywhere in town, or do we want to limit it to certain areas, or that sort of thing?
Right, and I agree with that, and I would like Bill to make sure that that is on the list too, that, you know, on the list was certain types of things that could be considered, and that was one that I noted too, wasn't on there, is it okay to have it in all of the different zones and, you know, throughout Rockport or not? And, you know, and I think that we need to keep in mind, and maybe this is covered under the changing, the character of the neighborhood point, but, you know, people buy into residential areas with the intent that it's a residential area, and then, you know, when you have in and out, in and out every few days, that starts to feel, and I can attest to this where I live, it starts to feel like a commercial area, not a residential area. And so, anyway, there's sort of a, you know, there's almost like a, you know, preconceived notions of buyers that have, that have purchased their property with that residential nature and the effect that this has on it.
Well, one of the things that I would advocate strongly for is that these establishments would need to be owner-occupied, because some of the things we're seeing in other towns and cities around the state is that out-of-state people are coming in and buying up the housing stock, because they know they can get, you know, several hundred dollars or a thousand dollars a night for the place, and then, and they're not even there. So I think that's, that's a problem we can alleviate with that simple requirement. It was interesting, we had the email, I don't know whether you saw it today, we got an email from the Airbnb PR person or something like that.
How they ever, they're paying attention.
I think Bill Nape Power had reached out to her or something, anyway, gave all these statistics about, so I said, well, let me go on Airbnb and look and see what's in Rockport, and I put in Rockport, and it comes up with a thousand, of course, they include Belfast and all these. But the interesting thing was, I found out there's one in my neighborhood that I didn't know was an Airbnb, and maybe that's good, because they aren't having any necessarily negative impact.
If you did have one, you'd know it. Probably not appropriate to say, but the issues that are listed here are very real neighborhoods that have it, and there are folks that have, as Deborah said, moved areas, pay certain amounts of money for their personal property with the intent that it's going to be as intended, and then to find you're in a high-traffic, late-night, back-and-forth zone is not what people signed up for.
And we just need to make sure that we, you know, we, it's like Kleenex, you know, we're starting to refer to short-term rentals as Airbnb, but of course, we know it's, the issue is really short-term rentals.
Right, and that's, yeah, I only mentioned Airbnb because that's what I looked up.
No, 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 and I said the same thing, and that's what, right.
But the good news is, you know, we're not the first community to tackle this, there have been people that have weighed this, this is a prime opportunity to shamelessly steal the best practices from an ordinance standpoint, from other communities, either in Maine or nationwide, that have the same feel, look and feel that we do. And I think it's proper to send that to the ordinance committee for-
I think Bill Nape Power is the right one to help us with that, because he has so much experience over so many communities.
Yeah.
So.
This is a topic that was, that's been discussed at the ICMA for the past couple of years, there's been workshops on this for the past couple of years.
Well, I mean, one of the things that's typically, the ORC workshop would have already been held by now with the Select Board, it hasn't been this year, and Bill has got some issues that he's, I guess, gone to the planning board with on a few things, so. At some point, I would anticipate that we'll have to have a workshop about ORC issues, and I don't think there're going to be that many this year, just because of the late timing of it, and I, at this point, we're probably looking at early January, I would suspect.
Yeah, I think-
And this is where we can discuss this in a little more detail, because we do, we can't just throw this to the ORC and say, fix it. They're going to need input from us, and from the planning board also, to say, well, what do you, how do you, how do we, the Select Board, want to have this crafted? And they can work on the ordinance, they're good at working on the ordinance and coming up with things that perhaps we didn't think of, because they know the ordinance inside-out. But we do have to give them some guidance.
Well, and I'd like to, and I'd like to be involved in that process.
You're hanging along on the ORC with me this year, anyway.
This may be one of those items where there's a whole lot of folks that would like to have input, and it may require an open public forum for discussion through the process somewhere.
Yeah.
It definitely does, I mean, I know Rockland went through this, a bunch of towns and cities in Maine are going through it, particularly coastal towns.
I mean, ORC meetings are open to the public, but they're in the morning, and so you're right, we may have to schedule something when more people can come.
Yeah, I agree, I think that would be a very good idea.
And ultimately, anything that happens with this would have to go on the ballot anyway, and there would be a public hearing, as we have every spring for these land use ordinance.
But there isn't much on the ORC's agenda, there's been a couple of minor, there's a couple of minor things, one of the things that I've asked, we talked about briefly previously, is the cultivation of marijuana on, you know, for, I can't get you to grow my marijuana, three marijuana plants.
Especially skirting around the regulations to make a commercial growing operation, basically.
So this, this year, this year might be a good year to move this forward, because it's a lot of work, it is a lot of work, but it's work that we've been kicking down the road for a couple of years, so.
I think it's time.
So you, you want to move that forward?
Yeah, we don't need a motion on that, but I think definitely, you can report back to Bill that we would like to-
Yep.
To have the discussion about it, and he can come up with, and we don't have to fix it all in one year, I don't think, we can at least start with some things that will help things, I mean, the other thing that Camden did with some of their rental properties, said you got to rent for, in certain zones, you can't have any rental periods less than a week, which did annoy some people, because they had some shorter-term rentals they wanted, but that's, that's another tool we could use if we so chose.
Right.
Okay, job descriptions. We have all the job descriptions, I got my little crib notes here that I took, rang through, and I'll jump the gun with Deb, there are, there are a lot of typos and things like that in here, particularly, I know this having to do with the lifting, the comments about lifting are just, they don't make sense in most of them, it says, you know, it says, you can lift this much, but then only on occasion, so those just need to be looked at carefully. I do have some more specific things, but I'll let others.
I'm in the-
Sorry, just to follow up to that, and given that we have sort of a procedure that I look at policies and procedures and stuff like that before we, I mean, I would be happy to be looking at these too, you know, in the future, something like this before it's presented, just to at least fix some of those.
I want to say that Rick mentioned that it was a lot of work, and I can imagine it really was, and Diane probably had a lot to do with it too, whatever. And I think it was really good to do it, and I know Mark's been pushing on this for a long time, some of them hadn't been updated for a long time.
It was two thousand, I found some from two thousand and four.
It was time to do it, and I think that this is, this is a tremendous accomplishment, I think, we do still have some work to do on a few things, so I'll, I have some comments of my own, but I'll let other board members.
Well, I made it all the way to librarian, and I've got enough comments and concerns on some of the content, not just the grammatical debt and some additions. I'm not ready for primetime yet on this.
Okay.
I feel the same way, I've gotten through a lot of it, but not all of it, I mean, there was a lot here, and there's just more time that we need to spend on it.
Can I make a suggestion then, that you send me, it would be very helpful to just get them your comments and suggestions in an email or written form, that, and we can track them down, rather than-
We don't have to necessarily go through the laundry list.
You don't have, so you're not spending your time, time here going through it, because this isn't the-
One thing that, I mean, there were two things in particular that I was looking at. I know that all of your salaried people are exempt, but there ought to be a parameter of hours that they are expected to be around, and, you know, for instance, yeah, you're exempt, and I know it's flexible, I know if you're in doing, you know, fire stuff, or if you're in doing highway stuff, you know, you can go home early, you can do this, as long as the job's done, but there ought to be something saying, like the town office, you're here from eight to five, rather than just-
Just a general expectation, some hours a week.
I mean, that's, that's common on any position description is to state what the normal work hours are.
Yeah, I mean, I-
It would be a good adder for all of them.
Yes.
And I, like I said, I understand that they're flexible, but that way they look at it and they say, oh, yeah, I got to be there between eight and five and- Well, at least everybody knows what the expectation is when they see the position description before they even start work.
We could add a normal work hours in.
Another thing is that bothered me was that, you know, on some of them, they talk about, oh, this person, you know, interacts with the public, and they need to be nice and play nice, and, you know, they all need to be nice and play nice, and so, I mean, either that needs to be in all of them, or, you know, I mean, there has to be an expectation, not only of teamwork within the office, but of being courteous to the public.
Well, but I think some positions interact with the public more than others, so I think it's okay to-
That's true, but, but, yes, but it's not consistent with those positions that do interact more than others with the public, it's not consistently said in those positions, so there's no rhyme or reason.
One sort of general thought I had as I went through these things, and that has to do with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Almost every job says, you got to be able to see and you got to be able to hear.
Right.
Or you, or whatever it is. And some jobs, obviously, you do, but, but I think we have to have someplace, you know, stated in there, maybe it's a general statement someplace, that, you know, if a reasonable accommodation can be made, that somebody can, you know, for example, somebody who has very poor vision or something like this, they may be able to do, and I can't pick one off the top of my head or whatever, but, but we have, I think by law, we have to be able to make accommodations.
I would agree, and Rick, you may have reviewed these with a lawyer, but regarding ADA, there are some constraints and things that you have to put in a position description.
Right, and when I talked to her, and I can, you know, I can send them, I can send the, particularly the physical requirements piece, but the, when I talked to her, it was basically the baseline of establishing what, what the requirements are, so that you can make reasonable accommodations, so if, 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 one of the things is for ability to walk around the office and, and, that's a reasonable accommodation to say, well, if you're in a wheelchair, you can still get around the office. So that's a reasonable accommodation, but a reasonable, it's an unreasonable accommodation to think that you're going to have a police officer being able to be blind.
Yeah, who can't see to drive, yeah, I understand that, but I just think we have to be careful with that, and make sure that we have it in there stated, that, you know, where possible, the town of Rockport will make all reasonable accommodations for, for people with disabilities who want to apply to the job.
Oh, so, yeah, okay, that makes sense, that you could have a, have a statement in there.
Someplace, and I don't know whether it needs, you know better than I do whether it needs to be in every job discussion.
You might, you might have a single-page overview of the generic expectations of all employees, that would include-
Be nice.
Be nice, you know, and the ADA-type things in there, and then, for each position, obviously, you have the details.
Yep.
So that, that goes to something that wasn't, or at least I was just trying to peruse through to make sure I hadn't missed it, but indicating in there that they must maintain any and all licensing in order for them to perform their jobs, whether it's a driver's license or-
It was there on some of them.
What, the ones that require a driver's license?
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're a highway person, or if you're, anybody that a license is required, you know, if you know right up front that part of that is, you have to maintain your licensing.
I saw that in several places, there were things like the harbor master certification that had to be done, and assessing certifications and things like that. I can't say I know all of them, so there may have been some that were missed, I don't know.
Yeah, I was just trying to-
I noticed in particular in my crib notes for police, that firearms qualification was there for the patrol officers, but not for the chief or the sergeant, so that needs to be there.
Yeah. Rick, you asked for specific feedback on each one, is that what you originally asked for?
I think if there's some, there's-
By email?
Yeah, if you can give me them by email for specific, there's specific things like where we've missed something, you know, having extra sets of eyes of pointing out things that, where there's typos.
It's a lot of work. If we're, if we're not going to be bantering this around as a board and talking about it, can we include one another? So that way we all don't send Rick the same thing about-
As long as you're not having a meeting-
No.
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, if we're going to, if I'm going to send an email to Rick with my concerns, I'm happy to copy everybody, we just can't, we just can't discuss with my concerns, I'm happy to copy everybody. We just can't, we just can't discuss it.
Just have a comment on it.
And that's what I was asking. We can do that as long as we don't talk about it.
Yeah.
We will provide feedback and copy all of us on it. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Yeah, that works. Okay. But I, I want to reiterate, this was a lot of work, and.
Absolutely.
You know, even though we're sitting here nitpicking at it, but, but it was a good chunk of work, and I think, I think everybody will agree that it's, it's, it's heading down the road and the way we need to head down the road.
Rick, yes, it is. Rick, could you remind us of what our, like, deadlines are on the, I mean, is this, is this something that the auditor's been requesting?
No, no, we requested it.
And.
In May, I think.
Yeah, well, that was a board request.
Yeah, well, I think you, I think, I think, yeah, Mark's, a past board has been requesting it, right, at the same time?
Yeah, well, I hinted at it in May, and we kept going, and with the idea that it, at this point in time in the year, it would be done, so that we could do job comparisons for budgetary purposes.
For budgeting, that's what it was, for budgeting.
And I don't foresee, I mean, it may happen. I mean, some of those things, you know, job descriptions, you know, like with your highway and your police department, we can't change that without talking to them, right?
Uh, no, the jo- uh, the job descriptions, the job titles are in there, but the job descriptions are not part of their.
But we can't, oh, didn't I see police department job descriptions in there?
You mean from the butt because of the labor.
It's Rick's prerogative to establish that. I don't believe that the, are you talking about the union contracts?
The job descriptions for the, for the police and highway, the, the things that they do.
Right.
And I thi- I don't know, we can't tinker with that, I don't think, unless we.
You can, i- i- as long as it doesn't, as long as we're not assigning something that is going to be outside of the contract, you know, they're gonna, they, they, they may have a little bit of a cow. We, we don't have that kind of relationship with our unions. Our, our agreement, our relationship with the two unions are pretty good, but if we started making, you know, making changes to the job descriptions and, and adding a lot of extra workload, then they're gonna.
I guess where I'm going with that is, when, when we're looking at them as a board, if we provide the feedback for, initially, for all those other than police and highway, the ones that are non-unionized, then we can get that done a little more quickly, perhaps, and, because I'm not going to be looking at wages primarily for the union people, because.
No, you can't.
No, that's what I mean. That's where I'm going.
Right, right.
So if I can get the other ones done a little more quickly, that would certainly help.
And the other thing is, and the internal controls that we're going to be looking at in January, and that I've done a lot of work with Megan on, I, I know that there's, it's been a while since I looked at some of the detail, when I got that draft off six weeks ago or whatever, but I know that there's some reference to, you know, the job descriptions and stuff with the internal controls. So from an auditing perspective, you know, they want to see us have those internal controls in place as soon as possible, and those contemplate having the job descriptions, too. So there's a somewhat of a deadline.
I'll try to get my email off in the next couple of days, and we'll.
So I, but, but, I mean, there's some things that we talked about now, so make sure I've got these right, and then there's all kinds of the, the smaller little things. I've got two things right now, is add a component for hours, expected hours of work, or some, some, some kind of a statement there.
Yeah.
And then also a policy statement about reasonable accommodations, you know, an A D A.
Yeah.
Statement in front of that stuff. Here's the baseline of what's, what is necessary for the job. However, we will make reasonable accommodations for, you know.
Yeah, the lawyers can probably tell you how to do that.
The lawyers can come up with that.
So.
We also talked about having an over, a one-page or four expectations of all employees.
General, general conditions for employees by the town of Rockport, which would include that A D A stuff, and maybe the, the part about being nice to the public and things like that.
Yep, good, thank you.
But I still think it's worth, for the ones who really do, like in Linda's office, who do interact directly with the public, I think that it's worth having it in their job description. That's a key component of the job.
As long as we do it consistently.
Right.
Yep. All right, and then we will get back to you via email, but we've got to figure out a drop dead date, because this could stretch on, and we're.
This is not, do it, do it in the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
No. Okay, and just, in hindsight, we asked, we asked Rick to provide clean, a clean copy, and he did, but in hindsight, I'm wishing I had the tracked copy.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's confusing with so many changes.
Well, I don't want to go back to it now, though.
I can't, I'm gonna have to go back to the one that was issued a couple of months ago, and then look at this and see where the changes are, and say, why did this get dropped, why is this added, but the content, we'll provide feedback. When do we need to?
Well, I mean, for me, I have my crib notes that I took. I'm going to get those out in the next couple of days.
All right, I'll, I will send the big, big issues.
But you're going to do a more in-depth, Deborah is, that's, that's your forte.
All right, I will send my big issues before the end of the week, and then the smaller ones. As I can.
Okay, anything else on the job descriptions? Next on the agenda, we have a change in the personnel policy, Article 25, having to do with sexual harassment. We do have the tracked copy with us there, and Rick, do you want to introduce this?
Yeah, basically, we're doing, on January 8th, we're doing our, our annual safety training, and one of the components of the safety training is the sexual harassment training, which we've started doing actually as a training, because it used to be that it was in, what's required, acceptable, is to just have a, a, an insert in people's payroll with their, with their checks of, you know, here's what's allowed, here's what's not allowed, and that's acceptable. We, last year, decided we were going to start doing, you know, just having a special training for this. So the sexual harassment policy was adopted, I can't remember, it doesn't have a date here, but it was.
Part of the personnel policy.
It's part of the personnel policy. I sent it off to the lawyer to say, okay, if we're going to do a sexual harassment training based on our policy, should, what changes would you make to our pol- what changes would you recommend to make to our policy before we go ahead and train to something that maybe we can improve on? And this is what I got back from her.
Rick, my question to you is, why is this specific to sexual harassment only and not harassment of any kind?
Because that's what's in our, that's the training that we do now, is a sexual harassment training, and that's what, that's what's in the policy. If you want to change it.
All right, but how do we do harassment prevention of other forms of harassment? How do we train on that?
We don't have a, we don't have anything in there now, currently. I mean, we could, if, you know, that's not required by statute, but we could, certainly can.
All right, because currently, harassment prevention training encompasses all forms of harassment.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we can go with this this time around, but we ought to be thinking going forward.
Right.
How do we modify our training and protocol so that we provide training on harassment prevention of any form?
Right.
Anybody else have any comments on this particular article of sexual harassment?
Let me.
Yeah, I mean, we have, when do we tackle content?
Have at it.
All right, uh, you want to go first?
No, you go ahead.
All right, can I issue a concern, I'm sorry, a concern on second page, section four, at the very bottom of the page, last section, that offers the opportunity of an employee who does not feel comfortable discussing allegations with the town manager, or the town manager may be implicated. The employee may report the conduct to his or her direct supervisor, or if the town manager is the employee's direct supervisor to the chair of the select board. I offer that that's not within the realm of the responsibilities of the chair of the select board. It ought to be to any member of the select board.
I agree with that.
I'm sorry, you're ahead of me.
The last, I'm talking the last sentence.
Typing myself a note here.
The last sentence on number.
This, this one, we, I had a lot of discussion with the lawyer about this one. You're in the last section?
Number four, paragraph four, the last sentence.
Suggesting instead of the chair of the select board should be a member of the select board.
A member of the select board.
A member of the current select board.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, let's make sure that's specific.
Are you saying you had a conversation with the council about that particular issue?
About this, this section?
The chair?
This, this section is me, there's an added one that I, I wanted to get clear in this section, what happens if the person is uncomfortable in any way, making those, you know, bringing the thing, bringing this forward. My guess is that, that our lawyer is not going to say that changing it to a member of the select board is a problem.
She wouldn't have no basis to say that.
Yeah, I can't, I can't imagine that she would.
Well, she, she couldn't, and even if she did, I wouldn't accept it personally, because I, she doesn't have any basis in which to say that.
I, I'm thinking she just probab- she just used that language because it's what she's just putting in.
Yes.
I mean, and under our protocols, if we receive anything like that, we're going to immediately share it with the rest of the board.
Exactly.
That was through our agreement as a select board as to how we would conduct our business, yes.
Yep.
That's right.
However, the, I mean, in this particular case, you could go through the what-ifs and things, but people have, they may have, I've got five select board members, I feel more comfortable talking to point A than point B.
I agree with you.
And you cannot preclude that from happening.
Right, I mean, you know, not to do the gender thing, because I'm not, I'm like the last person that does the gender stuff, but, you know, it could be a female who has an issue and doesn't feel comfortable talking to, you know, one of you guys, and would rather approach me.
Right, no, I, I, I agree with you. That was, that was my whole point for this piece, was that what happens if it's the, if the complaint is about the manager?
Right.
You know, what, what happens?
We're good with that.
We're good, yeah.
It's just, it's just a select board member and not the chair.
It's a simple change, just change a member of the select board.
So you want to?
Any member, a, a member of the.
Of the current select board.
Of the current select board.
And the other thing I would point out, where we're doing a policy, is that the email address.
Yes.
Should not have your name in it. It should say town manager.
Right.
Oh, we don't, but, we've gone away from that.
Okay, well, then, it's on the website, it's published on the website or whatever, but you shouldn't put in somebody's specifically, you know.
Then as soon as you're not the town manager anymore, the policy has to be amended.
Exactly.
Okay. So, are you getting that, Linda? So are you going to be ready to adopt this policy with those changes?
Does anybody have any other comments?
I was going to say, this probably had just recently been reviewed within a couple of years, hasn't it?
Yeah, I think it was just a matter of Rick sending it to the attorney and saying, you know, do we, do we need to dot any i's and cross any t's?
Is there any updating that needs to be done?
And that's what she, this is what she came back with. So it's, the way I read the, the tracking is there wasn't a lot of change of content here, it was just moving things around a little bit.
Well, and adding the detail up in the first section, which is appropriate.
The green?
No, the A, B, and C.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's.
Which one, Jeff?
Yeah, I say, yeah.
It's all good.
Oh, okay.
It's the definition.
Yep.
And what is considered sexual harassment.
Yeah.
And again, I just offer, going forward, harassment takes on many forms.
Yeah, I, I got myself a note for that.
I'd, I'd like to get the, right next to the Article 25, sexual harassment, have the date up there that it's done. That way, we don't have to, well, let's see, and when was it last done?
Well, it norm- it's, it will.
This is only, yeah.
It will show up on the bottom. She'll have a, a revised date on the bottom.
All right, you get the.
Yep.
So.
The full policy, yeah.
If, if we're going to. If we're talking about still adopting this today, I would like to take a try at reading paragraph four for Linda, so we know exactly what it would say then, if we're going to adopt it, okay?
Yep.
So, "It is the responsibility of the employees to promptly report incidents of sexual harassment. Employees who have complaints of sexual harassment should bring the matter to the attention of the town man- manager either in person, semicolon, by phone, semicolon, email with confidential in the subject line." Take out the email address, right? Email with confidential in the subject line, semicolon, to be consistent, "by mail, P O Box 10, blah, blah, blah." Okay, and then I, and then.
Yeah, that's, that's the wrong address, yeah.
Oh, 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 or by, then, say, or.
One-on-one Main Street, right?
Yeah, one-on-one Main Street.
Well, then put in the right one, or we could, I mean, presumably, you could put in the correct address, because we're not going to change that. So, or by mail, and then put in the correct address. Keep the part that says, please mark envelope as confidential, and then, but Jeff's going to say something to me in a minute, but, and then the next sentence would be, if an employee does not feel comfortable, blah, 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 blah. Go back to the, to the bottom line, the employee's direct supervisor, comma, or a member of the current select board, period.
The or doesn't go there. Yeah, good.
Sorry, or if the town manager is the employee's direct supervisor, the, or a member, a member, no, or, you're right, sorry, a member of the current select board.
Yeah, comma, comma, a member of.
Oh, yeah, the comma's there, and it should stay there.
Yeah.
A member of the current select board. Okay.
There's just a, there's a dangling, open parentheses after email that needs to be removed.
Oh, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So we're just referencing phone, semicolon, email, semicolon, by mail with the proper, right? Oh, we kept in that, I'm sorry, and now I'm screwing things up. By phone, semicolon, email with confidential in the subject line, semicolon, by mail with the proper address, please mark envelope as confidential, period.
Well, to be nitpicky here, we either have to put by in front of all of them, or only in front of the first one. So it has to be by email.
I only did by, by, either in person, by phone.
Says email and then by mail, so you gotta have a.
Oh, by, yeah, you're right, either in person.
Take them all out except the first one, or put them all in.
Either in, in person, uh, yeah, just take out the buys. Phone, email, with confidential subject matter, or would you rather have the buys?
You go with the buys.
Go with the buys.
I think so, I would agree.
Go with the buys. Either in person, semicolon, by phone, semicolon, email with confi- by email with confidential in the subject line, semicolon, by mail with the right address, please mark envelope as confidential. Okay?
Just so we can get, get this moving along, are you okay with approving it with those changes as, as read by Deb, and Deb will check and make sure that we're doing it correctly before we, we print it and make it final?
The only other change that I would suggest is, again, down in number five, when you're talking about the Human Rights Commission, you've got an email address in there with a name in it.
Right.
Which is the name today, but it might not be the name next week.
Right, 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 right.
So if we can, if we could find an email address that was generic, that would be good.
Well, what you do is, like, refer to Minga website, X, Y, Z.
Yeah.
Okay, and that way, anybody can find it anytime. That'll last for a few years.
Yep.
Right.
And I'd include the zip code after Augusta. I know it's up top, but in that second part, you say, in person at the commissioner's office, 19 Union Street, Augusta, but that's an address anyway, so.
The zip code, maybe.
Well, it's redundant. It, you're asking, you're saying you can go see the person in person.
Sure, show up at their place, yeah, you don't need it there.
You don't need it there.
Okay. Okay, everybody good with this?
Yeah, so I motion that we approve the change to the harassment, sexual harassment prevention policy, and I'd also offer that you might want to change it to sexual harassment prevention policy, and that with the changes as discussed, pending Deborah's final.
Edit.
Grammatical incorrect.
So you want to add prevention in there, too?
Yeah, Article 25, sexual harassment prevention.
You can't prevent it. You can't say that you're preventing it, though, really.
It is actually, the policy is actually not about prevention, it's about reporting.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
So I think we leave it alone.
I'd actually leave it.
Leave it.
Okay.
Okay, have the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
And Deb is going to check it.
Yeah, the part of the motion had the final check was for, you know, grammatical and stuff like that. Okay, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay, that's a four to nothing vote, because Doug did leave. Okay. We don't have any wastewater commissioner activity. We did, just to call your attention to it, there was a wastewater issue that came up, and Rick had it in his manager's report. Hopefully, everybody saw it, because there was a issue with a lean and things like that, and it's been resolved without the commissioners needing to get involved, which is good. So liaison reports.
Okay, cap, uh, let's start with the garden club. Uh, just got an email, we've talked about, with Gretchen and Dave and those guys, about getting a list of the items that they want to see included in the upcoming budget. Getting them together and getting them to Mike, so that he can include it in his budget. And I think I instructed Gretchen to sort of follow that line, to get, get her items, her dollar figures approximately, and get them to Mike, so he could put them in his parks and gardens budget. Conservation meeting, yeah, let's see, you know, they've got one coming up December 6th. Noon time in the Richardson Room, they're going to be talking about the Harbor RCC meeting held on the 29th of November. They're going to create a list of questions to ask various environmental professionals, discuss a letter for the mooring holders, discuss a letter to dog owners, discuss pesticides used on lawns near water bodies. And what else did they do? They were talking, they, Fred has done a letter to a Canadian entity that has tried some encapsulating of the styrofoam material. And apparently, it was a good idea, but apparently, the reply email from these people is that it didn't hold up as well as they would like, so they're going to look at it a little bit more. In the capital improvement meeting we had the other day, they're, they did a great job pulling everything together, but they're, they were still stuck on that $5,000, $25,000 line item. And I, I don't think they'll be looking as closely at the $5,000 item, even though it was explained by Megan, is, you know, it has to be in there for, help me with that, accounting purposes, or-
Yes. Generally accepted accounting.
Right.
Generally accepted accounting practices, you have a proper definition for capital. Can I just add to that?
Oh, have at it.
All right, the, the reason that it's a point of discussion is because you want that group to see the entire capital plan. Because if they only see those things above $25,000, that could be a smaller chunk of, they'd say, well, where did the rest of it go? Well, the rest of it went a bunch of other places, but you didn't see it.
Yeah.
So they need to see it in the document. We worked on formatting of the document, we're working on the layout, we'll-
Yep.
Get it right.
Okay, what was the reference to the dog letter? What was that, dog owner letter?
Oh, there was no, I was just reading what was going to be on the agenda.
The beach, the beach and the picking up dog waste?
Yeah, I think the conservation committee over the, commission over the years has tried to communicate with dog owners to keep them in, you know-
Yeah, we tried that a few years ago with, when dog licensing to, maybe it's, it's worth doing that again. We, you know, when people were licensing their dogs, we gave them a hand, a handout about dog waste.
I, you know, that's the most irresponsible thing in the world, not to pick up dog waste. As a dog owner with two dogs, I mean, it's just, I, I think anything we can do to tell people to pick up the dog waste-
Just a gentle reminder is-
Well, that, and also leashing their dogs, too. I, I'm just saying, as a general matter, you know, a lot of dogs don't leash, I mean, a lot of owners don't leash their dogs, because they go on the theory that, oh, my dog is friendly. Well, your dog might be, but my dog may not be, and you're going to cause a problem as a result, you know, which my dogs are friendly, I want everyone to know, but-
Yeah, there's a state of Maine leash law.
Well, they have an ordinance in the town also.
And there's a city ordinance, yeah. Town ordinance.
They can be cited for it.
All right, liaison reports, were you done?
I'm, thank you.
All right, let me go through different groups. Pathways, meeting held in Camden, all well. Need to make sure that we're prioritizing, that committee, you know, that is going to prioritize the work, because it's a long list. It just needs to make sure that it goes back to each of the public works directors for communication. Capital Improvement Committee, Mark covered most of it. One item that was discussed that the, we're going to make a decision on sometime is how, where, or if the fire truck that we have in storage is going to continue to be in storage, or what the path of that truck is. The Harbor Committee went through and reviewed rates and made rate recommendations. That needs to come to the, to the group at some point.
Didn't, we-
I don't think we voted on it.
Yeah, you weren't here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't, was it last meeting? All right, my apologies. So that, that was the big work there. And then on the comp plan, I need to get the Excel file. I did offer up a couple of months ago to work on that and clean it up, do the cleanup work. Rick, you have the master copy in your office?
Okay.
Of markup and column addition and some reformatting stuff. I don't know when that's going to be done. But we'll, we'll tackle it from there.
So on the broadband issue, Rick already mentioned in his manager's report about the good meeting that we had with neighbor, the neighborly folks. And we were really encouraged by that conversation. And I think that neighborly was planning to get together, okay, neighborly, to back up for a minute. They, 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 correct me if this is, if this is wrong, Rick, but basically, they take those who want to perhaps have an interest in funding broadband and those who have a need for broadband in terms of municipalities, and they pull those, you know, capital markets types and municipal types together. I mean, that's sort of a broad picture. And so Rick and I had talked about it, and he filled out an application, and they decided, they, they, there were certain applications that they said, actually, we, rather than to go through this, this sort of grant process, this sort of periphery process, there are a few that we're going to select that we would like to really work with, that we think that there's really something, you know, to, to work with those towns more, more deeply. And they chose Rockport's application as being one of those, which is great. And that means, and, and, and I should say that in working with their financial folks and, and developing, again, the whole idea is develop, what are, what are our options as a region, for example, out there in financing some possible broadband project? We're still on that part of it, you know, we're still in that research phase that we've talked about before. And these are the people who can really provide that information, who are the experts, and, and have the, the resources and the contacts, et cetera. And they were planning on putting together, they were interested in our area, and they were planning on putting together a regional group of some of the, you know, surrounding towns to us anyway. And that kind of fits in with what we would like to, to do in terms of, again, you know, reaching out to surrounding regional communities to see what other kind of interest there is. So they're talking about a potential meeting with a number of communities in January. You know, everything lies, takes longer, maybe it's February.
It, and I did get here that Rockland is also interested in, in joining that, they're, they're very interested in that regional-
And was it Union or Hope, too, wasn't it?
Potentially Union.
Union.
Yep.
And, and we know that there's some folks in St. George that are very interested. So, anyway, so that's all, I mean, that's all really quite positive. They're talking about maybe trying to get something together at the Samasat. Rick offered to, you know, to help with that. So I asked them, well, if you're going to work so, you know, closely in helping us try to figure this out, how, how do you get paid? And they said, well, ultimately, they get paid through any funding, you know, funding source that they put the region together with. So it doesn't come out of our, what we're doing here doesn't cost us anything. So, yeah, anyway, so I think that that's very positive, because I think that one of the big problems is trying to figure out exactly how to get to those financial folks who can really help us address this. And I think that neighborly, these neighborly people are the, the woman that we talked to is a, formerly worked with JP Morgan. I mean, they're very sophisticated people that, you know, she's based in New York and working with a number of towns up here. So, and then secondly, my forever gratitude, as I mentioned to Doug for being on the Midco, solid waste board. I attended my, or they, but they approved the scrap dogs contract. And then I attended my first in-person meeting last week, and some subsequent things going on. So, anyway, I'm into it.
Are people over the scrap dogs daisco? Was that, or is it?
Um, I, well, they're, they're speaking with me, so I guess that's a good sign.
It's always hard when those things don't go your way.
Right.
But if you're going to be a good public servant, you move on.
Right, right.
Okay. For me, Legacy Rockport did vote to fund the moving of the electric pedestal for Andre, up to $800 from the funds that were donated for the restoration of Andre, so that, my job here is complete. So that can, that can happen.
I didn't hear, didn't hear that, that's good.
Cemetery was supposed to meet, but due to the shortage in Linda's office, we postponed that, but now back to full strength, thankfully, to hear that, in the town clerk's office after the tough situation. So we'll have a meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks, I think. Ambulance will meet this week. ORC, we sort of already talked about, I've got to go rattle Bill's cage a little bit more on that, but we should hopefully get going with that shortly after the first of the year.
Yeah, I talked to him just, just last week, just last Thursday or Friday about it.
That, that sort of brought up a question that came up during our CIP meeting with regards to the cemetery and $30,000 that was there for avenues?
Yeah, I'll get it right there.
But I thought the avenues were already funded and just waiting to be built. You were out in the other room, I thought about going and asking you, but, but I think there was $30,000 in there for that type of work.
In the capital improvement plan?
Yep.
Yeah, I think they have, I-
Might be on the next page.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the money in the cemetery fund is, is for maintenance and care, not for new construction, is that right?
Cemetery expansion, Seaview Cemetery.
There was another one somewhere.
It was thirty. If that was the 30,000.
That was thirty, that was, cemetery expansion's 35,000.
And what was explained, I think, by Megan or somebody that was there, is for lanes, roads. And I thought that was already something that was, that was in there from last year that had just started to be done this summer and fall.
I'm trying to remember.
It was to include roads, or the job itself included roads, according to what was discussed here.
I don't remember that we had, I know last year, we had an appropriation for the reserve fund for columbarium.
Yep, that's in here.
But I don't remember the-
Well, I know, I know Dave asked, our Sexton Dave, asked me when they were going to do it. So that's when I, I guess I might have spoken with Linda about that. And then it started to happen. There is one lane down there that's, that's half done. That they've stopped the work on, but I think it's stuff that was already funded, so what I'm asking-
Unless they did it, it must have been, yeah.
What I'm getting around to is, is this money that's in here now for additional roads, or is what's already funded, and they've started all that we need? So we don't need that, maybe.
That's out of this year's, but, or that's in the CIP? That's in the CIP. I'm, I'm sorry, I was trying to keep up with notes here. What's in the CIP is for additional roads.
I believe you are correct, it's for semi, it's for Seaview Cemetery expansion and roads.
Yep.
But they're-
The one we're working on now, we budgeted for, for this year, out of this year's budget.
Yeah, that's, okay, I think that's right.
And the reason we stopped was because it got so wet, we couldn't continue.
So this is to finish that area down there, then?
I think for additional avenues, other than the one that's already under construction.
Under construction.
And I think it may be that-
But it would have to be for an expansion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is what that would be, is for areas where there aren't currently anything in there. And who knows, it may be if we get the columbarium in there, that we don't need that as soon. That would be my anticipation, because-
That stretched way out into 2022 for completion.
Yeah.
But the reserves are laid out over the next four years.
Well, okay. Well, I'll see what I, when we meet next week, if you can do a little digging on that, Linda, whenever we schedule the meeting, hopefully, in the next week or two. Trying to think if I have any others, zoning board has not met. I think that's it for me. Anybody have anything else? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Similar.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Unanimous, adjourned at 9:07.
Don't forget, we have the holiday-
Oh, yeah, the luncheon, I meant to mention that, the Wednesday luncheon-